Okay. Welcome, everybody. We're gonna go a couple minutes early tonight. It is six fifty-four, so we're gonna call the meeting into order. If you all arise, we'll have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Nicole Passy and then a prayer offered by Judge Law. Okay, counsel, is there any discussion on the proposed agenda? Hearing none, could I get a motion to approve September seventeenth, twenty twenty, council meeting minutes? Excuse me, adoption of the October eighth, twenty twenty-five agenda as finalized.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
And any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. We will open it up to public comment. If there's any. Hearing none, we will go on to number, item number two, open container permit. Alejandro Perez. Who's gonna speak for, who's speaking in behalf? You're, she's up? You instead of step up to the mic, I know, sorry. This is not, this is not scary. Trust me, we are not scary. So what they're applying for, counsel, and I'll talk, you fill in if I'm wrong. They wanna hold a, an event over at the community center on October the twenty-fifth of this month. From four until midnight, and they wanna build to have the ability to have alcohol there. You're not selling it.
No.
Just gonna have it there, and by state statute, they required, because we're in a public building. They have to come and apply for an open container permit. The fee for an open container permit is fifty dollars in the town of Thane. Anything to add?
No.
Counsel, do you have any question for her? The reason we ask for motion on this one is to approve this application for an open container permit for Alejandro Perez. Is because it is in on our building. That's the only reason we'll take it, so I'll entertain that motion.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion?
I guess, what activity you having?
It's just like a birthday party.
Trying to think on the community center. Do we have in there that they have to have a police officer?
We don't, we only, we've only made that stipulation when it's been catered.
Whose birthday? And they didn't make you stand up there?
Congratulations. Okay, we have motion on the table. We have a second, all in favor. Opposed, motion carries. You are good to go. So, take care of everything with her, and you'll be good to go, okay? Thank you, guys. Thanks for coming. See you, guys. Have a great night. You can come in tomorrow. Take care of that. See you, guys. Okay, item number two on earth. Item is ER Development LLC's building permit. Do you wanna speak behalf of? Turn it over to you for this.
What kind of questions you guys have?
Let me get my spill and you can fill in the blanks.
There you go.
Cause mostly I'm in charge of the building permits. Um, this building permit's up at Meadows at Star Valley. It's along the road. That runs north and south on this eastern portion of it. Wrong, you correct me.
It is, it's on Rusty Springs.
It, it meets every requirement we have. The setbacks are in line. I believe the square footage is in line as well, right?
Sixteen. I'm sorry, fifteen sixty-four, two-car garage. It is the last single-family lot in the phase one that has been approved by the, by the town.
I didn't know that.
So.
Cool.
We've got a few more coming up, but this is the last single-family.
Yeah. So everything is in accordance with our ordinance, their fees have been all paid, so from my point of view, this is a good building permit. Is there any questions on the building permit for me, for her or me? Hearing none, cause I get a motion to issue a building permit for ER Development LLC, which is building permit twenty twenty-five dashes one zero zero six.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
You're good to go. Sunrise is not here. I don't know if they have anything really to report. I haven't seen anything from them. We will just make a note on the sun rising tab that they came down and volunteered in the town. As a business and they painted the mowing shed. For us and did a good job and made it look really good, and we appreciate them for coming down and we appreciate. Rebecca and Sally putting that on social media to help recognize what they did there. Okay, Judge, we'll turn it over to you.
I'd like to, just report briefly on the, uh, the judicial conference that I attended. That's why I missed the last council meeting. Good training. They have separate classes for judges. So it's not just for the lawyers and, uh. As I said in my report, maybe one of the most worthwhile things is to just mingle and, and. Talk about problems with the other municipal judges. Those are worthwhile.
It makes you appreciate your problems compared to some of theirs, right?
I am delighted that we do not have jurisdiction over drug driving cases, but. If you care to enact an ordinance, we'd, we'd take it on, but, uh. Yeah, I'm glad to let the circuit judges handle those. So other than that, it's been pretty routine. Good to have the officer coming back. Make me busy again. I've submitted my. Not inflated report for my expenses, and if you could. Other than that, I think, any questions that you have?
Yeah, okay. Cade, you're here. I skipped you. I didn't know you were, I know we started a couple minutes early, sorry. No, you're great. You don't have the stoplight to use as an excuse now.
Just a couple things here, um, East Booster Generator. Bill's working on that, doing all the prep work for the generator now. Um, concrete generator pad is in. Kind of what's been installed to the building. We relocated the transfer switch to that southwest corner, so Cliff can still access his roll-up door. And other than that, project is.
Transfer switch or automatic?
It's an automatic.
Automatically kicks over.
And then, um, North Sewer. We're doing our aerial survey this week, um, hopefully tomorrow, getting the topo data and the photography for that. Hoping to start on designs once we finish the rest of those easements. And then our wastewater facility plan. So we've kinda seen that summer surge come down, so we pulled our wastewater meter. And then, we're gonna get that facility plan all wrapped up and. Think we got a good picture of the summer surge, as we've been calling it, and kinda what our baseline is for. Colder months and then. We also talked about that with you and lifespan as well with Cliff a little bit too. He was quizzing us on that as well. Get to know how lo, what we have and how long it's gonna last as well.
How's the easements discussions going? I know we've had an issue, we won't relate who that individual is, but how's that? Have you guys had a chance to have a conversation there yet again?
Uh, we haven't had a conversation. I'm not sure if Councilmember Visser has chatted with him about that or not, but, um. The rest of the easements, I believe, are in place besides that one. We were researching the ownership of that road as well, just to verify who owns it. We were a little uncertain of that as well. But Sherbals hasn't given us an answer on that yet.
Okay, any questions for Cade? Thank you.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for painting.
Thanks, Cade. Okay. Councilman Healer, we'll turn it over to you. You gotta bring the mic down to you, though. So Rebecca kinda AI can catch you.
Okay. Um, Parks and Rec, let's see. Football season's over. We had a great football season, flag and tackle. This is probably the most even teams we've had for everyone, tackle, which worked out really good. Appreciate the mayor being a ref all the time.
The weather was by far the best we've ever seen.
Super nice, so. Fields are looking good. Um, we might look at putting fertilizer on this fall, if we get a chance.
Not gonna happen.
Not gonna happen, never mind.
We missed it. We missed the window.
Depending upon time-wise or whatever, I'll try to put some dirt up on the field if I get a chance. As of lately, I've been out of phone service and network, so. Um, I've looked at the sound system. I sent it to Rebecca and Devon. One of the crater things that happened, good or bad, was when we went to do the sound of football. I knocked over speaker and broke one. Devon knocked over speaker and broke one.
Wasn't on purpose. It was not on purpose.
So, our old speaker system that we've been saying we need to get rid of, we're getting rid of it. So.
I wanna officially state on record that I've been requesting one for two years now, and all of a sudden Joe requests it, and now we're getting it. I just wanna go on record.
I'm fine with that. We do have the, for Halloween this year, we're having a, um, Halloween festival instead of Harry Potter. We're trying to decide whether we'll do Harry Potter every three years, every two years. Fill up and debate, but this year we have a festival going on. Um, we have a group that's putting on the festival, so we don't have to do much for it. Kind of a nice break. Parks and Rec, we have thirteen teams, lady volleyball team signed up. Rebecca did a nice job. We got, we have teams going on in Etna, Thane, and the Readiness Center. All three places.
And the Readiness Center did not charge us. Which is pretty good, pretty nice of them.
It is. So, that's really good. Other things going on, traveling, well, rec, ski club will be starting. I know. I haven't even mentioned that to Rebecca. It popped up on my phone to start looking at ski club, so. Ski club again is. In the, in the works again or whatever, so.
What are your thoughts on what you wanna do there, Joe? We went to a different resort last year.
I heard zero complaints about going to the different resort. Probably. I have a personal, I like Targhee myself, but. I didn't have any complaints about Beaver. Everybody said they did a great job there, seemed nice, but.
The only reason to go back to Targhee, and maybe this is what you guys could, would be, I don't. A lot of those people would probably not go spend that money to go to Targhee, and it gives them an opportunity to ski that resort. Whether or not we even have an opening there. I don't know if we will, but do we reach out them to first to see? And then go with that Plan A, but then Plan B, go to Beaver, or just stick with Beaver, which probably is easy and we could get in?
My, my biggest vote is whatever is easy for you to organize. Targhee was difficult, in a sense, to work with all the time, because they have nobody that'll get back to you until like November type thing.
And they just have so many schools trying to get in, that they, they have to wait till all of it.
Yep. I, I'm, I'm fine with going to Beaver, cause they, they treated us really well. Everything seemed to go really smooth. They were happy to have us there, so.
The only other comment and to, to, I'll, not to, just to add on to what Rebecca said, cause you're right, most kids aren't gonna go to Targhee unless. We do this, cause it is such a substantial saving, but. We have such a high percentage of people from Etna Alpine that do partake in this, this participation and.
It is nice going the other way.
Going that way is really nice for them, for, for, for one-time thing, right? But nothing goes that way. But it is a one-nice time for thing to help out that families that way.
The one thing we did do last year, though, is we took a bus to Alpine. We'll take the bus to Alpine and pick them up and bring them down, so they're still not have to come to it. It is, I mean, it's another thing down this way, but. That is a huge thing that we actually send a bus to Alpine and not just make them come so far or whatever.
Did we see much of a change in numbers?
No.
We had about the exact same amount of kids participating regardless.
I thought we might see drop off, but we did not.
But we were also quite a bit cheaper last year compared to previous year. Hundred dollars a kid. So I, that, um, that is one positive of going to Beaver. Expensive on parents and given the substance, but I'm still in favor of reaching out to Targhee. That's my opinion is just to see if they will. Have anything to go and then. I'm good either way ultimately. The only complaint I heard from my kids who went was the, in Targhee, they have kind of a designated area. So they didn't have to fight everybody to eat lunch. And versus down at Beaver, it was just, you gotta fight, and they're like, you couldn't find a place to eat lunch, so we literally sat on the ground to eat lunch. But I know that they're finished, their lodge should be finished now, right? I knew that was part of the issue, but that was my only complaint I heard from my kids, and they're very inexperienced skiers.
Everybody I talked to said, it's, I mean, you're not gonna get Targhee, but it's still, they had a great day. That great weather too, we lucked out too, so. Anyhow, but ski club's coming on. Traveling, ski, um, tourism. We're working on ski touring, probably be at the sewer grounds. Devon brought up a good point. I'm supposed to meet with a guy, I'm not sure when. He's coming in. He'll build the track, he will do all that. I'm trying, we're trying to figure out parking and stuff for horse trailers, things like that, so. We will. Discuss that when. I'm with him, so. Part of my thought was if we could plow out down, make the road wider, go into the sewer ground. And park there. But I don't know where the track is gonna be, so. Until I know that, I'm kind of a crap shoot. Other than that. The only other question I had was, have we submitted our application for the second grant? It's submitted, okay.
Yes, we can confirm that. Rebecca.
Okay, not a problem. Okay, that's all I had.
Any questions for Joe? If not, we'll turn it over to Lenny.
I don't think I have anything.
Short and sweet, that's what I like.
Yeah.
Yeah, come on, say that word.
No, I think everything's good at the community center.
I think there's one thing that has been brought up, or that was brought up, um, they just called the, the church that's across the street. Does she talk to you about that? They just called me like yesterday, I think, to find out.
Yeah, about renting it on Sundays and. And I told Sally to just schedule it at where it fits.
So they've run out of room. They wanna build on, but that, they're. Keep trying to fit on their property and it wouldn't fit. So now they wanna go to the community center gym, but our problem is we like to keep it open for community to use. But he wants it every Sunday. Schedule, because for them, that's hard.
They were willing to pay the fee to do it.
But we don't rent it out to anybody on Sunday, do we? How often?
How big a room do they need, though?
They want the gym. So, I mean, it's maybe both kinds of year, but we rent it.
What, but what times are service, I guess?
Yeah.
It's like one. Oh, they set up, so like ten to one, I think.
That's the problem, is cause most of the time it's gonna be rented from eleven o'clock. If somebody rents it.
I guess, so that's really the question. I mean, for them. It'd be nice, obviously, to help them. Do we just walk it out and say, we're not renting on Sunday, so they can use it?
Well, it hasn't confirmed whether or not he's.
Yeah.
Gonna do it yet, so. Something to keep in mind when we cross that bridge, I guess, when we get to it.
Yeah, if they could go a little earlier, that would be, they were like ten to twelve, then I would be more inclined, cause. Still allows the opportunity, cause you're right, if it's gonna be rented, it's gonna be in the afternoon. And if you gotta wait till twelve, so yeah, if they could go nine to twelve type thing, that would be. More favorable, I guess, in my eyes. To keep it open still, just for the handful of times we look for the public, but. Yeah, okay, perfect. Any questions for Lenny? We can go to Councilman Visser, he's not here today. I don't know where he's at. Cliff, is there anything to report on the sewer, or Cade took care of it? Okay. Um, if not, we'll turn it over to Councilwoman Passy.
I don't have anything for fire, don't have anything for police, but water. We've got the booster pump. Yep, the upgrades to the booster pump.
Oh. Sweet.
And then we're just waiting on the, I know what it is from castle. Well, we're just waiting on the vault for Bear Hollows and. New, Old Castle, from Old Castle. So, we're just waiting on them to finish getting that to us, so we may not be able to get it put in this year, but. At this point, we'll have everything to plug it in in the spring.
Cool. Okay, any questions for Nicole? If not, we'll go to me. Let's go through these ordinances. I am prepared, as much as it scares me. Because of the massive changes that are in this ordinance, four oh seven, which is chapter ten. I am prepared to move forward with what we have. Is there any questions or comments regarding the council on the proposed changes to this?
I'd like to push it back one more month.
Okay.
And, and the reasoning being is, when we're discussing going from phase one to phase two. Like, so, what the bill that was?
Yeah.
I've actually put that to the leadership conference and I brought it up. I attended a meeting on construction type thing. And so they're supposed to give a report back to me. I don't know the right answer.
I don't either.
If we can push it back.
I will a hundred percent lay that back. It's the third reading for next month. Okay, uh, now on to ordinance four oh eight. Okay, Joe, you asked the question last month.
Okay.
About. Actual is so the, the ordinance reads, and this is current ordinance, says the compensation for each county council member should be. And right now it's seventy-five, and we're gonna change it to one twenty-five for actual attendance at each regular or special meeting. Um, I have talked with Kevin Boyles about that and. No, we cannot change that. So that is actually state statute. So a state statute, we can take it broad and we can make it more specific and narrow, but we cannot take theirs and expand it. So it really is defined as council meetings only. So I guess my next question is, the max we can do by state statute is one fifty. Do we take it to one fifty, or do we leave it at one twenty-five?
I was more concerned of. It being abused the other way.
Okay, well, I was also more like, if you show up to Torah travel and tourism, you should be compensated for that time. But by state statute, like, you can't.
No, that, I, I don't, well, anyhow, yeah, I see both sides, but I was, I was more concerned of. Showing up for all these different meetings and that being a hundred and twenty-five every time you show up for a meeting.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yep, so, yeah, no, this is, we can't redefine what it is. We can change it up to one fifty. But that's it. And the mayor, just so you know, it's like twenty-two, two twenty-two thousand five hundred is the max. We don't need to even go close to that, but. There, so, any discussion or any changes you wanna see regarding ordinance four oh eight, before we take a motion on second reading?
No, I'm good with one twenty-five myself.
Can I take him, and I'm just gonna reiterate, this does not apply to any of us. This applies at the next election. Those who are up for election, those people who win their reelection, even if you're reelected, th- this starts to apply then. So could I get a motion to approve number, ordinance four oh eight, council and mayor compensation on second reading?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Okay, this ordinance number, and, and this was thrown at you very last minute, and I don't apologize, cause it's. Of such a great resolution, I'm not gonna apologize. This was handed to us by Alpine. And so we wanna make sure we give full credit to Alpine for doing this. Um, what this basically states is, calls out our county commissioners for keeping their medi, meetings very secretive. Not opening them up to the public, and so this is us just saying, we want this thing. Opened up to the pro, public, we want this broadcasted so that there's transparency. That's what this resolution does. It doesn't mean anything, it doesn't, but it means that we're, we're a voice in our opinion, and this is. Highly. Desired by, just not our town residents, by most residents in, in the Star Valley areas, from who I've talked to about this, so. Is there any questions or comments regarding this resolution?
Are we going to send it onto the county commissioners that we passed it?
If passed, we will email it to every county commissioner. And I, it'll come from my email. I'll have Rebecca scan it and I'll, I will email this.
Perfect.
To every county commissioner and the county clerk.
It's past due. Ridiculous.
Uh, any other comments or questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash ten dash eight, Lincoln County Livestream Commissioner Board Meetings.
I'll make that motion.
All in favor? Opposed, motion carries. So they know that we were all there. Okay, events, I think, well, Joe already covered the event coming up. You don't like my pen, huh? Um, so I don't have anything on events, on updates. Trying to think. I don't have any real updates. So I will give an update on Star Valley Health Lease Agreement. I gave you kind of a time last time that, well, basically, they, they missed the payment. They owed an extra two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in interest, because they made their late payment last year. I was told, they've sent a check for, so they had a basically a remaining balance of about four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. They sent a payment of right around a hundred and ninety. Hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars, which they paid off all their principal, and a little bit of interest, and. From their words, to avoid any more bad publicity, they will just pay off the remaining balance. So we have not seen that check in hand. It's a twenty-one dollars a day accruing interest, if they, and every day they haven't paid, so. They said they were gonna do that, and they said that. Last week or this week? Yeah, they said that last week, so we still don't see the check, so, well. If we don't see it shortly, we will take, do action on that as well.
So what?
And that total would be like four hundred and something.
Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars basically of interest that they owe us. So which brings me to my next point. Thank you for not letting me move on. We need to spend that money on a project.
Great, I got a list here. Great, I got a list here.
If they don't pay it, we can repossess the building. Which then I would get Rebecca her pool. It's the physical therapies, the two buildings across the street. Yeah, though if they don't pay it, by technicality, we can technically repossess it right now if we want, because they haven't paid it in full, so.
And they've missed payments.
Missed last year's payment, which kicked in the interest, otherwise it was zero percent interest. So now they have to go back and pay a three percent interest on the entire project, which is just over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Yeah, how would you like to make that mistake, how many would peo- how many people would keep their job if they made that mistake?
Not many.
Damn, I can't think very many, go ahead, Joe.
Well, things that came to mind when I was hurt that we were getting the money. Um, if my understanding is correct, we have one section of the community center roof that's not done. I would love to see that get done. But we know that that whole new, that roof is, has been done in the last, what, ten years?
Okay, so, just. How percentage do you think is la- like, what percent would that be compared to what we just, how, what's the size comparison, what we did? Cause we just last did it, it was right around seventy thousand? No, that's all I'm asking for, you're saying about one and a half times, so, so if we're ballpark, and we're talking maybe a hundred and ten thousand dollars, okay? Your next one, Joe, hey, don't let Joe spend all this money the rest of you.
Um, I also, well, this is, I don't know why I'm pitching the community center for Lenny.
I was gonna say, he's doing it for me.
Suffering your job right there.
It'll be on, it'll be on my board next year.
I have that kinder or whatever, looking at, like, upgrading the heating and air conditioning. In the community center also, so I haven't got a price backup from him on that, but he did go in and look, go through and measure some stuff. Um, the other thing I had was a sprinkler system for the upper ball field. Was on my list. And. I also didn't ha- I also had on my list, I don't know if our police need anything. Are we lacking or? Uh huh.
One of the chief from Diamondville, he reached out to me to have a new camera.
Okay.
And for the body cam, and for a taser, so I'm gonna reach out to him.
Okay.
It's pretty much free.
That'll be awesome.
Anything that needs upgrade in the car, for you or whatever.
No, if you need a future, I think we can use that in a method time, definitely. Anything we get down the road, not right now, I think I can work with that, but in the future I'll recommend that.
Yeah, no, when we, we, yes, when we bought that, our policeman at the time, ninety percent of his work was done in the summertime, so it wasn't an issue.
Yeah.
Cause he rarely worked in the wintertime, cause he had another full-time job, so, yeah, a hundred percent. Yeah, we can think about that down the road for sure. Any other projects, Joe? I'm gonna add, I'll add on the tennis court.
Yes. To a pickleball court.
Resurfaced. But we're also decided that's where we were gonna apply for the.
What if we use some of it to, like, have the railings on the community center redone? Cause the ones on this side are rusted out pretty bad.
There's just. Just the one, right?
Oh.
You're just talking like repaint it?
I just figured new, cause.
And that's, that's a summer project, we can definitely put that on the.
That was my bad, I didn't.
Oh, when they pay in the community center, yeah, okay, we can check on that one, yep, good idea. Anything else you can think of? There's no rush, we haven't got the check yet, but there's no reason to put this money into savings, this is a bonus to us, we might as well. Invest it back into the community so they have those things, so, those are a good start, um, and we can prioritize those as we.
A sound system.
Rebecca.
Swimming pool. On Main Street.
No, she wants the speaker system along there with the light, we could have, she want there's, there's a. Light system that has light and you can speakers that are inside those lights, and are through there, so.
We haven't, I don't believe in roads or anything and stuff, we haven't budgeted for that plow truck, have we?
For which plow truck?
For a.
Pickup?
Pickup plow truck, did we budget for it?
Yeah, we really need to get going on that, like, we need to write up the bids for those things, cause we have that budgeted, it is budgeted this year.
Okay.
We just need to write the, cause it has to go to bid.
Yeah, it has to go to bid, but.
Yeah. I will work, I will work on that.
If we.
Well, I'll, I'll work in conjunction with the clerks to get that started and rolling, because you're right. It's October and we haven't done it yet.
I couldn't remember what we budgeted for or not.
Yeah. Um, okay, be thinking, be adding to that list, look around, ask community members to. Um, as part of the meeting that we had at six o'clock, we've had fifteen, um. Fifteen people fill out the survey online, and so, or Rebecca or I will. Get a printout and email that to you guys, so you guys can see people's comments, um, most are favorable, and have a couple of good ideas. And we still need to follow up with some of our projects that they asked at our last meeting, like, the number one thing people still tell me is shade at the park. And so we just need to buy the canopies and.
Well, if you do a canopy, you could do a picnic table under the canopy.
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, okay. Any other questions regarding Star Valley Health and the, the potential money that's coming in? The next one is Silver Star Fiber Optic Installation, this is just more for your information. When they went to do this, um, their region, their, their business rep for the site, this state of Wyoming, I guess, for state of Wyoming is. Weston Parlow, and he reached out to Rebecca and I and said, hey, you guys have a fifteen thousand dollar credit. Do you guys wanna use this as part of your money for your cost of installation, and we were a little confused by this, but. Apparently this went back when they bought the two lots over there by the, by Napa, they gave us a fifteen thousand dollar credit. And it's just sat there since twenty seventeen, so. When they bought the lot, my assumption. I have no idea, Joe would know more than I do.
What's that?
Why did that, why did they give us a credit?
It had to do with the price or whatever, to meet their standard thing. So it had to be down, lowered that much.
So, we have that in there, so yes, we'll a hundred percent use that for our portion of cost of the installation, plus we'll also. Reached out to see if we could just add it to our bill. Hey, use that for our bill credit for the next however long it takes, which is twenty-four months, by the way. Be the next twenty-four months, so, um, no, that's happening and that's going forward. Um, there's our, our investment portfolio, um, because we are a week early this month. I've been informed by Rebecca that this is a challenge to be this early, because it's hard to get all of our. Data and all of our information sent in, cause we usually don't get it till about the middle of the month, so we're a little early, so there's not, there's nothing to report there, but I wouldn't recommend any changes. Is there any questions for me? If not, can I get a motion to issue checks of unknown amounts as identified in the previous month's minutes to be ratified at the next council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, motion to pay bills?
Motion.
Second it.
Any further discussion, all in favor? Opposed, motion carries.
Oh, hey Cliff.
Remember that?
Before I forget, so. You have my side?
Is there nowhere to sign?
No. Last month's agenda.
Yeah, so we'll ask him about.
You sure you don't want another one? Sure you don't want a second? Or license plaque or?
And we'll see if another agent. Yeah, just take the black to him.
Take a black here, let him drill it, fit it. He might even want a black one.
I'm, I'm fine with that. Unless somebody has one better idea. Sure. Thank you.
Sit right there.
See you, Cliff.
Thanks, Doug.
Have a good one.
Hey, I'm a little confused here.
Some of them already signed?
Yeah.
Really?
Not kidding, Joe. What's that?
You missed a whole bunch here.
Good night.
Hey, that's funny. Make sure we're all paying attention.
Don't know any.
You're gonna double up on bank statements next month. I went back to the championship league, you guys have cleaned out the carpet, and no idea with that football. No idea, I'm just telling you, the insurance was, and there was, that football was not in there anymore. Joe, will you find a nice football again?
Yeah.
Whatever size that is, let's just buy it.
Okay.
That way even if we find the other one, we'll have two.
Okay.
Cause one's missing?
It was missing for all but one week of the season. All of that was manually showed up. And I put it in a specific spot and went back, find the last pick, and it's not here. Who moved this?
Yeah, this one?
You did.
So our, um, the Trevor, remember? Who needed to do community service? He painted all the activity for us.
Okay.
And then he owed the ten hundred dollars, but we asked the judge if we just had him do more community center service, could he just pay that?
Like work it off?
And he said yes, so.
If you haven't painted the end of the pavilion.
Yeah.
No.
So I might have him start drilling holes in the other.
That one looked good.
Yeah.
I thought so.
Yeah, I wish it were dark, so we could see the outline, like dark, dark, to see if the outline looks like.
It's a black shadow anyway, not as old.
I think it's awesome.
Yeah.
Wait, and I just wish it were dark, so you could really see what it looks like, Joe.
It's like a light bright.
Exactly what it is. It's a light bright, that's exactly. Okay, any other, other comments? If not, can I get a motion to adjourn at seven forty-one?
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Record council meeting time with Devon.